We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. It is snowing. It's October 19th. It's 10 o'clock.
Why would you say that?
And all three county commissioners here, and we'll move forward with our county administrator. Good morning.
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 We have 30 exonerations for $10,658.49 minutes for October 12th, 2022, and board of the assessment appeals from October 5th. Vouchers: General County Fund, $80,753.11, 911, $2,0152.57, Chestnut Ridge Park, $148.80, Camp Muffley, $136.36, Mason Dixon Park, $571.11, Mon County Center, $1,014.47, Transportation Levy, $223,624. Fire Levy, $431.624.82, Recreation Levy, $281.419.70, Library Levy, $54,737.14, Assessor's Valuation, $124.75. Parks and Recreation Fund, $21,725.79, Purchasing Card Vouchers: General County Fund, $8,002.1172, 911, $7,004.9887, Home Confinement, $5,002.9303, Mason Dixon Park, $46.66, for a voucher total of $1,118,465.14. We have budget revisions that require state approval from General Fund for state grants, jail reimbursable, Central Garage, and capital projects extension services. In-house approval for General Fund for the county commission budget, $401, and teen court, $452. We have position vacancies for boards and authorities and fiduciary orders for October 19th, 2022, and a third quarter '22 file status report for District Commissioner George Armstead.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented?
Second. Pop moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Introduction of new employees, personnel changes. The sheriff, Perry Connor, I don't see him here, but I assume you have something.
Yeah, that's just a transfer.
Transfer.
So he doesn't technically usually have to come up. Colton Sims is transferring from a part-time court security officer to a full-time court security officer. His salary will be $2,743.04 per month, and that is, or was effective on October 16th.
Move to approve the position as, change as presented?
Second.
Pop moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a second one, too?
Yeah, so MJ at the Youth Services Center contacted me. The one that you approved last week didn't show up for their shift, so she had to call the next person on the list. Stefan Suggs, part-time relief worker at the Youth Services Center. On-call basis, not eligible for benefits. Starting rate is $14.40 an hour, and today would be his first date.
Okay. Move to approve the personnel as presented?
Second.
Pop moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is becoming routine in all departments, unfortunately. Okay, at this time, we're very excited. We have a presentation from Stepping Stones, the fully inclusive community playground project. If you want to come on down, and you can speak at mic, do whatever you'd like to do. We're quite aware of it, but now you can publicly announce it. This is great, and we're very, very excited to work with you on this.
Well, good morning. Thanks for having us back. I'm Monica Marietta. I'm the director of Stepping Stones. And this is Kim Walls, and she's the recreation coordinator. So we started this journey about three years ago, pre-COVID, and we have been home to the Miracle League here in Morgantown, West Virginia, for, we just finished our 20th season. One of the things that we're missing, when we kind of started looking around at what other Miracle Leagues that are popping up across the East Coast, is we're missing the full package. The full package being community support, the playground, the atmosphere. So Kim and I started going up and down the East Coast and touring other playgrounds, other Miracle Leagues to see what they had. We toured landscape structures. We actually made a trip to Minneapolis, Minnesota, toured the factory where they actually built this amazing playground that we have since designed, that we want to bring to Mylan Park. And one of the things that we really, really, really liked about this was that it is a playground for everyone. It's a fully inclusive, multi-generational playground. So it's for children and adults with disabilities. It's for grandmas and grandpas. It's for brothers and sisters. It's for siblings. It's for everyone. So it's not a playground just strictly for children and adults with disabilities at Stepping Stones or at Pace, but we want everybody to come out and be able to utilize the playground. So we thought it would be an amazing thing to add to Mylan Park. With everything else that's happening out there, it's going to be across from Stepping Stones, behind Miracle Field, so it's literally smack dab in the middle of the park. And as you can tell from the picture, there is literally something for everyone.
Something that, when we were touring these playgrounds, we did a lot of talking to not just people who designed it, but the maintenance crews and everyone who's the upkeep. So we want to think longevity of it. So a lot of things look really nice and pretty, but the longevity and the reality, they're very expensive and they don't hold a real purpose. I have two young kids myself. I'm a big kid at heart. I love to play. And so that is one of the things that drew me to these playgrounds, is whether it's a kid with disability or typical kids, parents are looking for the same things for your kids. So there's one entrance, one exit, completely flat surface, so you don't have to worry about any tripping hazards. There's no, so if grandma wants to climb to the top of the octagon, she can, because it's completely ramped. There's no stairs. There's different types of swings, so there's a buddy swing. So I actually swung with my kid, and we faced face to face, and we swing in it. So every piece of equipment is something, whether you're an adult or you're a kid or you're a grandparent, you can get on. It's fully accessible, but it doesn't scream, "This is for someone with a disability." Like, kids are playing on these playgrounds, and you don't even realize, hey, there's a kid with a wheelchair beside me, and they're able to play on the same thing I am. So there's some really cool features to these playgrounds that we're very excited to bring here.
The playground itself has a music area, a sensory area, a small kids' area, so for the child that's up to five, so they're not going to get run over on the full atmosphere. There's an area that's designated that they can play in. If they feel comfortable and mom and dad are playing with them, or a sibling is playing with them, then they can obviously play on the big atmosphere, the apparatus. But if not, there's a place off to the side that is very comparable for them to play on, where they're going to be safe. The music sensory area, we have a lot of kids in our community that are on the autism spectrum. So that whole apparatus may be way too overstimulating. But to go into that cozy dome over by the music area, that is the perfect spot for them. So there's a lot of different things. We literally took in, every one of the athletes that come through Stepping Stones, we took into heart, like, what would they want to do? What do they like to do? And again, a lot of it is, these playgrounds are designed for kids under the age of 13. Like, they're not made for adults to play in. They're not made for children or adults with disabilities, or for Kim. So that is one of the things that we designed, was that it was something that children and adults could play in, because, again, I have a 31-year-old son. He likes to play on the playground. He likes to swing. He likes to go on the slide. He would love to climb on all of that, but if I take him to the tugboat depot, people are going to look at him like, "What's he doing?" So again, this is a place where everybody can play, so nobody's pointed out as being different. We literally started this, as I said, before COVID hit. So we had about $100,000 in the coffer before COVID kind of closed that, and we kind of took a backseat for a while. Since we've just in the last six months kind of come back out and thought, COVID's not really going away, but it's time to hit the ground running with this again. So we put together a fundraising committee to work specifically on this playground. So we have $100,000 in the coffer, and since we've started six months ago, we have a pledge of $68,000 coming in at the beginning of 2023. We just got word last week that the Mike Pushkar Foundation has allotted $50,000 to the playground. And then we have some other grants, so we'll find out their decisions in December. But we have this amazing brochure that we want to get out to print, so that we can actually go out and start going out into the community to talk to people, because we haven't actually done that yet. So we're ready and can't wait to go out and actually start talking to everybody about what it is that we want to bring to Mylan Park.
We'll be discussing, unless you want to say no, we could, we'll be discussing on the new business. But if somebody wants to come in.
Yeah, we will take up the agreement, but I do want to ask a couple of questions about the actual project. So at what point will you guys know that you're going to go forward and start building?
So we are, our goal is to reach $500,000. Once we reach $500,000, then we will start ordering the equipment. And then our board has made the agreement that we will work on funding and fund and pay that off as needed.
Okay.
So we are moving forward without a doubt.
We would love to start building this spring, summer. That is our goal. We would love to have this thing going as soon as possible.
Great. Well, I think it's kind of a week we're going to be talking about playgrounds a lot. We have this playground. We have a dedication of a playground out at Mason Dixon. But I think it's important to have this inventory in the, in the community. And I think it's a great service that you're providing in bringing this forward and doing all the legwork to make this happen, because I think it's going to be amazing once we have it, have it here.
What's the total cost of the project?
$2 million.
$2 million.
Today.
Today.
I was questioning what.
Today.
Yeah, today.
Yeah, today. That's a good point.
Well, one good thing, some construction costs are coming down mainly in the areas like wood and stuff, but, you know, hopefully that provides a little bit of relief, and hopefully your group can raise enough quickly before, you know, to take advantage of, before interest rates get any higher. So I encourage other entities, public entities, to get involved and have some skin in the game in this project, like we're going to agree to in a couple minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, we have comments from the public. If anyone would like to come down and address the public, please come to the mic and state your name and address. And we look forward to hearing from you. Come on down.
Hello, sirs.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Kevin Daly, and I'm from out in the Richard area. And my first question before I make a couple of statements is, did you read today's newspaper? Did you see where the state road came out and addressed the problem that I was here seven months, almost to the day ago, where you folks heard my complaints and you wrote a letter to the, to the state? And I want to say, first of all, I'd like to thank you folks. I'd like to thank the Dominion Post, because if, if this doesn't get verbalized and out there, we, I mean, even the letter you wrote went nowhere. It wasn't until they came out and graded the road for blacktopping that the water quit coming into my moat that, that I had to build, that I can't even access my own property with, my own driveway, that it started running down Route 7. Now, all of a sudden, it became a priority. And so I talked to the liaison. I recommend anybody that has any problems with Department of Transportation to, to contact the Bridgeport Office, to ask to speak to Tanya Clemente. She's fabulous, and she is not running interference for the state of West Virginia. And I instructed her that when they came out, because I knew they'd be out, because they said they cannot pave until that road is dry. I told them, "Do not plan on coming out here and accessing my property." And, and I'm pretty sure my neighbor felt the same way, that they needed to bring a truck that actually had a vacuum in it. So when they did their work, they weren't just sloshing their red water everywhere. And they did their best, even though there's a 200-yard strike of orange mud running down Route 7 right this minute, but again, I'm not here to complain about that. So I want to be honest with you folks, okay? I fully intended to come here today and to be removed by the deputies because of my frustration. Mr. Bloom, I'm thankful that you haven't blocked my number on your phone. Okay, he has, he has responded to me, and, and you couldn't ask for anything more from, 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 from these three gentlemen. But I'm telling you, the state road, they're making their promises. They can't even come out on a regular basis and flush a pipe. They have to wait until the water comes up through the road, and then still they ignore it. Now, now they're got, everything's great. They're going to do their paving, but it's not stopping the red water from coming in our basement. So now they're talking about this big plan, that they're going to tie the Fairmont Mine into the Richard Mine by way of piping. Well, I know what happens when you run untreated water through piping, and I can show you what the pumps look like after a year, because I replace five sump pumps a year because of the orange water that clogs them up. So that's a nice pipe dream. But just, just for the, and I'm going to be very brief here. Just, just for the logistics. The Richard Mine is a mine that has a wet seal. So its entrance was at ground level, okay? They, they closed that mine up, and they determined that if they kept that dry seal on there, that it would blow out. So they punched a big hole in it, and that water runs at a rate you would not believe, and that's the water they're going to treat. The Fairmont Mine, which is behind Sherri Phillips's father's home and across the street from my home, is a different design. Its entry, its entry portal is high. Then the mine goes down, and then it comes up. Where it comes at its lowest point is behind, is across the street from my house, where Sherri Phillips's parents live. Any work they do, that's why we're getting the water here, because we're at the lowest point, and that pressure's coming through. So any work they do, they're going to have to do right there, which is fine. I mean, whatever it takes, we're good with that. But this is not just as easy as snapping your finger. And when, when you tell me that, when, when they say that they're in the early stages. The DEP in 2016 walked that area with me, took me up to the wet, up to the, we walked the entire area of the, of the Fairmont Mine, okay? They put us on this schedule then. Then they claimed that there was no money in the Mine Reclamation Act, because I think the president at the time wasn't really a proponent of the EPA, but regardless. So now there's no money there. So now we're going to get some type of money from the government, I guess. Well, we'll see. So anyhow, I just want to tell you in closing that I have hired an attorney, Matthew Johnson, from Charleston, and I'm pursuing legal action against the state because I'm still harmed. I've been writing checks. Two weeks ago, I spent $1,400 putting brand-new gravel in there, cleaning out the old gravel. I got a giant pile of red gravel that I can't do anything with. So, you know, this has just been an ongoing problem. I have 384 feet of contiguous road frontage on Route 7 there that the homes, that the homes are affected by this. So regardless, I yield my time. I thank you very much. You guys are the greatest. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
We're not able to respond, but at the end of the meeting, we had the opportunity to make some comments. Oh, okay. The post is here. I'm sorry. Come on now. I can't see you.
Hi, there. And did you get his full name and address?
Yeah, I'm Kevin Daly, 3401 Earl L. Core Road, Morgantown, West Virginia.
Thank you.
D-A-I-L-E-Y.
Go to the front page.
Okay, ma'am, if you'd just do the same for him.
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Sherri Phillips, and I am a neighbor with Kevin.
Could you give him your address?
3405 Earl L. Core Road, Morgantown.
Thank you.
Okay.
This has been ongoing since 2008. I do have the, thank goodness my mother kept all the clippings concerning this. Well, in 2008, 14 years ago, the state road come out, and they put a line through my front, the front of my house, went down, down through my driveway, put drains in. They said this would work. No. My basement, I can't go in because of the red sludge. I have to wear boots up to here to go into my basement, because it is now draining into my basement, heaving my basement floor up, cracking my basement walls. This water runs continuously. When we asked the state road to come out and do something about it, all we got was a handful of promises. They only come out this time because they are under contract to pave that road. And all that water, they thought, would disappear if they come out and suck that sludge out. It's not going to work if they don't do something, if the county doesn't do something, if the, if the state doesn't do something. We need help out there. Like I stated in the paper, we're just a piddly little community. But Greer opens at 3:00 in the morning. You've got trucks running continuously up through there. When they pave this road, the constant running of those trucks is going to wear that again. We're going to have the same problem over, over, over again. And all we're asking for is help, if they'll come out on a regular basis, to drain these lines, keep them clean, something to help us out. This, this is ongoing. It's not going to stop until everybody helps us fix this problem. And that's all, that's what we're asking for out of you.
We thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll respond. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we will close. Comments from the public. Grant Collin Coon, come on down.
I have two things today. The first one is a request for reimbursement for the VOCA grant in the amount of $9,847.42. And then the next one is the sub-recipient agreement for the Community Development Block Grant with, for MEYSP, and we have been awarded $20,966 for that.
Move to approve the president's. Grant documents as presented?
Second.
Pop moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Okay, great. Correspondence. Press release from the Mountaineer, Mountaineer Trail Network Recreation Authority to announce the hire of an executive director.
The gentleman's name is, oh, Lord, Andrew Walker.
Okay.
And I believe he's going to have at least a temporary office at the Mountaineer Country CDB.
Right. Okay. B. 2022 Annual Tax Increment Financing Report is submitted by the West Virginia Department of Economic Development Office by Steptoe and Johnson on behalf of the county commission.
This, this is an annual report that's required by the State Development Office that Steptoe and Johnson submitted to them on your behalf.
Okay. Do you have any other correspondence?
Yeah, the only other thing I have is, Parks Office sent the financial statement. This is the unaudited financial statement for fiscal year '22. So we will, we're in the process right now of procuring our audit for the financial statement. So as soon as we can get that set up, that would be great.
Okay. Do you have any correspondence?
Uh-uh.
No. We received the letter on October 7th. Dear Commissioners, as you are preparing your budgets for the fiscal year starting July 21, 2023, please remember that West Virginia Code 15A-3-16, funds for operations of jails under the jurisdiction of the Commissioner subsection currently extends the statutory per diem cap at $48.25, paid by counties and municipalities to incarcerate inmates in regional jails. However, the State Budget Office is now requiring by law to establish the per diem rate annually based on the three most current years of jail operating expenses. The current per diem rate established by the State Budget Office is now $54.48. Absent further legislative action, jail billings to counties and municipalities will be based on the rate of $54.48, beginning with the July 2023 billing cycle. I did ask our administrator what roughly that would mean to us if we used last year's numbers, and it could be an increase of $250,000. I did receive a letter, correspondence also from Canal County, who was very upset. Theirs will go up $500,000. So all I'm going to say is, they keep talking about a balanced budget. It's because the counties are paying the difference, and that's very frustrating to me. With that, I'll move on.
And that piece of correspondence was from?
From, okay, from Michael V. Coleman, Director, doesn't say, State of West Virginia Department of Homeland Security, Division of Administrative Services. Okay, and I'll give you the. Thank you. Okay, unfinished business? That's right, that's mine. New business. Consideration approved request by Mon County 4-H for use of the courthouse on December 5th for the Christmas parade.
Every year, they do caroling for the 4-H groups.
And hot chocolate.
And hot chocolate, excuse me, at, for the Christmas parade. Start time is, it looks like 5:30. I'm not sure what time the parade starts yet, but they'll be starting their event at 5:30.
Yeah, I think parade will be at 6:00, so. Move to approve their request as presented?
Second.
Pop moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider approval requisition number eight for Series 2021B Harmony Grove Phase One Project Fund.
Total requisition is for $227,949.90, and those funds will be paid to Preston Contractors, Adrian Enterprises, and Thrasher Group.
And one to.
Oh, and one to Enron Properties, sorry.
Move to approve the requisition as presented?
Second.
Mr. Pop moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. See consideration approved appointments to the Chief View Public Service District and North Central West Virginia Community Action Association.
Chief View Public Service District, Carl Allen Colbank has been serving on that board, and he wants to be reappointed. We've had this advertised for a few weeks now, and we haven't received any other applicants.
Move to approve the appointment of, the reappointment of Carl Colbank to the Chief View PSD as presented?
Second.
Pop moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consideration approved, change order number.
Hold on, hold on.
One more.
We got another one, remember?
Sorry. That's right.
Okay, so it's part of the North Central West Virginia Community Actions bylaws. The commission is to appoint or recommend, or they, they recommend, and then you all appoint a person. Michael Brandmeyer is, who has been serving. He'd like to serve another term. We haven't received any other applicants.
Okay. Move to reappoint. Michael Brandmeyer as presented to the North Central West Virginia Community Action Association.
Second.
Pop moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, consider to approve change order number two regarding the sledding hill slope gradient and tow rope installation project at Chestnut Ridge Park.
This is a change order of $3,887.32. This is for labor and materials to provide electrical hookup for a different generator. A different generator or the same generator? Second generator.
Rental generator.
Right.
The lines have to be run to that.
Okay.
Move that we approve change order number two as presented?
Second.
Pop moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, consider for approval memorandum of agreement between Mon County Commission and the Mon County Society for Disabled Children and Adults, Stepping Stones, to establish a multi-year matching contribution up to $300,000 for the construction of the inclusive playground project.
Last year, or last year, last week, you actually approved the funding, 75, up to $75,000 over a four-year period, so that comes out to $300,000. This is just to memorialize that agreement with, with Stepping Stones.
Move that we approve the memorandum of agreement as presented?
Second.
Pop moved in second. Any discussion again? Make it final comments.
No, other than I'm just happy to see this, this project moving forward, and I'm happy that we can give your fundraising efforts a boost, knowing that you have this commitment from the county commission, and I look forward to seeing the first shovel in the ground.
I'll comment during.
Okay, great. Well, it's from Poplin. Move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass. Consideration approval request for funding from the ARPA fund for Morgantown Utility Board to be used towards water and sewer upgrades at I-79, Exit 155 Chaplain Hill, and provide a letter to MUB confirming the same.
Move that we approve the financial contribution letters for water and sewer projects in the Chaplain Hill, Exit 155 West Ridge area as presented?
Second.
Move in second, is there a discussion?
We had been talking about this area, this, this MUB project for a long time. Currently, we have two, through MUB, we have two IJDC grants that are, that were approved by IG, IJDC for the next step, which is through the Water Development Authority. We had committed to an 80, we, we committed to the standard 80/20 match in the IJDC grants, but we know that there's a lot of competition once it gets to the WDA level. So we, working with the utility board and the developer, have come up with a plan to make a 50% match. So that match is a contribution of a combined effort between the, some of our ARPA funds and our West Ridge developer. MUB is putting in a significant amount for these two projects. So there's a water project and then there's a sewer project, and each are estimated around $7 million, so it's about $14 million round numbers. So we're hoping to get funding in an amount of $7 million, but then between MUB, the commission, and West Ridge, we'll, we'll make our $7 million match for each of the project, just to keep the math simple.
Just a note, this represents a level of cooperation with MUB and developer and the commission that I don't know that's ever been seen, at least in recent history. So I'd like to just acknowledge that, that MUB's got some serious skin in the game with this and we're looking forward to getting this project moving forward quickly.
Yeah, and, and I want to be clear that we have some ARPA dollars that are in there, it's about $1,750,000, but because of a cost savings on our industrial park project that we've already funded through ARPA dollars, there's about $300,000 left from that, so we're also throwing that money over here. So our, the total ARPA contribution is $2,500,000. But again, kudos to, to MUB in gaining some efficiencies in the industrial park project. We have additional money to throw at this project. So again, I can't, can't thank Mike McNulty and his staff for all the work that they've done trying to work through this very complicated project and hopefully these, the answer from the WDA will be positive and we'll finally be able to move forward on this expansion project off of Chaplain Hill and Exit 155 and West Ridge.
And again, the total amount of Mon County Commission, West Ridge Development contribute $3,441,500 of matching funds, and that has been done by weeks of negotiations and discussion.
Months.
Months. And only those parties, no other parties outside of those were involved. I will say that. Okay, we have a motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's a great move. Thank you. Okay. Consider for approval the West Virginia Local Government Election and Release forms between all West Virginia counties and cities and Janes related to the settlement with the West Virginia Attorney General.
This is exactly the same as two weeks ago where you approved ones for CVS, Walmart, and a few others. This is an additional settlement that the Attorney General has reached, so you just need to opt in.
Move to approve the release and settlement documents as presented?
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any other new business?
Yeah, I have one, one other thing. Two weeks ago, you all approved requisition number 67 for the University Town Center Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund. There was a Munichap invoice in there that should have been to the property tax fund, but it was wrongly coded. So we're revising requisition number 67 in the amount of $19,206.25. It's $3,000 less. So next week, you will approve the property tax one separately, but I needed to get this in front of you so that West Banko could process this for payment.
Okay. All right, move to, move that we approve the change as presented to requisition 67.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. At this time, reports from many elected officials or department supervisors? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. Sean, it's your turn.
Since our last meeting, last Thursday, and pretty busy day on the Red Team and then Development Authority, on Friday, we had staff reports. On Saturday, and Jamie, I saw you walk out and I seen you come back in, but I attended Hops on the Mon and it was incredible. The line to get in was, started at the bottom of Spruce Street, came all the way up to Walnut Street and then down. It went quickly though, but I was just amazed and it was great to see that come, that here in such numbers, I think, I don't know if that was the largest it's ever been, but it was pretty incredible, so. I was, that was the first one I attended, I wish I could have stayed longer. Sunday was a Friendsgiving event at Mon County Center. It was a, basically, it was an opportunity for our staff to showcase to the public and to the commission the capabilities we have in our Community Food Innovation Center, and the food was excellent. Commissioner Bloom was able to, to make it, had a great meal, it was a great home cook, it's like turkey dinner. And there's actually so much left, we was able to take home, some home, and my family loved every bit of it. Next day I came home, I was looking forward to the leftovers and Gwenny had already devoured them, so. Monday, we had our Tryon Hall, Tryon Hallack Community Center Monthly Dinner. Yesterday, had Clay Patel Senior Center Monthly Dinner, and then I had to run all the way across the county to Cheat Lake Volunteer Fire Department because I wanted to make sure I updated them on the communication issues that we were doing within the western end of the county. Today's a normal day, the commission is, will be observers in election testing this afternoon, and then this, later this afternoon is the Morgantown Area Partnership Board Meeting with Business After Hours, and I believe that's at Euro Suites. Tomorrow, Mylan Park Board Meeting, I have a campaign event I have to participate in on WVAQ, then there's a luncheon at Osage that Al Anderson invited me to, then we have our dedication of playground equipment at Mason Dixon Historical Park. Morgantown High Homecoming Parade, Builders Association Meeting at 7:00, and then Legal Women Voters Forum at 8:45, so it's gonna be a really busy day. Friday, we just have staff reports and a broadband tag-up in the afternoon, so. I do want to point out, next Wednesday is the start of early voting, we're doing the testing today. It sounds like from, from listening to the clerk on the radio that everything's ready to go. Reminder that we have three early voting locations, Mason Dixon Historical Park, Pier Pont Landing, and the Election Center at the Morgantown Mall. There was four.
Mountain Air Mall.
Mountain Air Mall, yes. There, that's the regular election center. There was four, but there was issues with the VFW and no heating, heat in the building, so they had to, they had to change that precinct. But four early voting locations, it starts next Wednesday and it goes through Saturday and then it's the following week, Monday to Saturday, that please get out and exercise your right to vote. And lastly, I want to thank you guys for coming in and airing your concerns. We're not always the ones that's over top of or in charge of the issues that you're seeing, but we certainly have the ability to raise these questions in a very public manner. And again, most of the credit goes to Dominion Post for, for printing these articles and showing the pictures that, you know, really drive, drive that issue home. So we do what we can, it's, it's not very often that we actually have a lot of success, especially when we're talking about dealing with the Department of Highways, but it does help to come in and raise your concerns. Even if you want to come in and yell at us, we understand it, we're just as frustrated at you sometimes. But it is, it does work, the system does work, you do come in, say your concerns, sometimes the, the press is very good about reporting those concerns, and we, we're very good about following up on, and doing what we can, so, thank you. I apologize that you've had to deal with this for so long. We've been off and on talking about it for four or five years, so.
Just a couple of things, I'm looking forward to the playground opening at Mason Dixon tomorrow. We also have a playground opening at, that's ready to use at Chestnut Ridge Park now, so that's your levy funds at work, putting those to work for the public. I'm great, grateful to see you in the one at Mason Dixon's. I haven't seen Chestnut Ridge's yet, but one at Mason Dixon's is really, really nice. As to the Stepping Stones Playground, this is, every community talks about their welcoming and all-inclusive for everyone to come in and see it, and this is actually putting that in action. And we're, we're trying to be partners in this because we want everyone to know that Mon County's open for business and we're open for all kinds of business for every type of person, every type of physical ability or inability that you have, you can come here and there's something to do, and this is showing that. When it's a tough economy and money's not as freely and as cheap as it was a couple of years ago, these are the kind of projects that usually go by the wayside. It's very admirable that you're jumping full head into this in this current climate, and I'm sure you'll be successful, everything I've seen from you guys shows that you probably won't stop until you get the answer that you want, which is admirable. So we're looking forward to being partners with that and can't wait to see it come to fruition.
Okay. First, I, I do want the public to know that Mr. Daley and Ms. Phillips have been more than professional in all their conversations with me, and I couldn't even imagine the frustration that you've been going through as you've been sending pictures and comments. I've been relaying them to the other commissioners, and I do appreciate your positive comments towards us and your understanding. I was in contact daily with Dave McDonald, but I, I agree with you, since they brought Tanya on, she is more understanding of what you're going through and able to get it across, and I agree with you, nothing was gonna be done until it affected the DOH. I mean, you were really being nice, you didn't tell the public that they put in the pipes the wrong way. You, you were very nice considering when they finally discovered all the things they did wrong and fortunately, you know, and I agree, I appreciate the article, and we will continue working on this. It is very rare, as Sean says, that we're able to, hopefully, we have a solution in sight, and hopefully we'll be able to get that, and please keep us informed, and I will keep, you have my number.
I won't give it to anybody.
I appreciate, but I do appreciate how you've handled it, and, I mean, and I'm just sorry that you would have to go months not being able to go in. I mean, showing those pictures was just unbelievable, so.
Tom, I, just by closing, I can't even take the moat down. I can't even close it off and use my driveway because I don't trust them. Now I'm gonna have to come out and, and get another excavator and dig another claw mark that's two feet wide and one foot deep in front of my house, so I don't access my driveway. And they acted like yesterday, well, just go ahead and fill that back in, and I'm like, I, I can't, I can't in good faith do it, and then in nine months from now.
Right.
It starts pouring into my driveway again.
Well, we will monitor too, from our angle, to make sure that it is done correctly. So we, again, we thank you for coming before us and those comments. Stepping Stones, this is great. The three commissioners have a motto, "Action speaks louder than words." And you can put anything you want in a sign or a proclamation, but when you actually do something for a part and segment of the community that sometimes we forget about and don't realize that they're as important as everyone else, and I just want to say, this is a great project and hopefully we can do some more things with you on that. So thank you for coming before us. The next thing I want to say is, last Saturday, we had our food giveaway, 252 families, and I want to thank not only the Black Bears, opened up the stadium parking lot, but I, but I need to mention Dan Brewster, who's a professor at WVU and has his classes called the Medical and Dental Brigades. They come every month and volunteer. They don't get any extra credit, they come at Saturday in the morning, it was very cold, and they came in, they were the only ones who showed up to volunteer, and we did 250 families and 970 family members, so I really want to thank them. Let's see what other things we have for the cover. I'm gonna say this, I don't care. I am speaking as an individual county commissioner. What we were able to do in this 12 to 15 months of working together with MUB, with West Ridge, could not have been done without the, the work of, you know, Sean really was amazing, being able to work the numbers and figure them out, and we were coaching him along, watching Sean do it, and I really appreciate that. However, I want it very clear, there are timelines, there was a specific timeline to get these grants, and if you notice, it was the county, MUB, West Ridge, and I want to make it very clear, if we move forward and have a new ordinance that the city would become involved, that would, could have jeopardized this whole project. And that's what the concern is. So where, we had the time and then have to go two to five weeks to get it approved, I can only imagine Granville's here and they want to do a project. So it's a real concern of mine personally, and I do hope that we can work this out, and we've been working, you know, MUB really opened up the doors, we have never had this kind of participation, and I don't want to lose that as we move forward. So with that, I'll ask for voting to adjourn.
I will say one thing though.
Go ahead.
When we talk about Department of Highways, I don't mean to cast dispersion on the local employees. They're still, they're still outnumbered. I mean, it's a numbers game and they just don't have the resources, and Mon County's been in that position for a long time. So I don't want to cast dispersion on the hardworking people that work for the Department of Highways. Sometimes it's just at the higher level, the supervisory level, getting the, the focus on it. So again, I didn't mean to cast dispersion on any of the local workers, and again, there's hardworking people at the district office too, like you found one. Fuad, Fuad down there answers any of my questions about signals. If you have a problem with a light goes, a light goes out, I email him and it's fixed within the hour. So there are good, hardworking people there. It's just sometimes it's just hard to get focus up in certain, to certain projects, so.
Okay.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
We be gone. Thank you.